Okay, that's good. So, good evening. My name is Pat Waite. I'm the president of the District Eight Community Brown Table Steering Committee, who is putting this on tonight, and I will also be moderating. With fair information, we usually meet on the first Thursday of every month over at the Village Square Lightworks. It starts at seven o'clock. I hope that you can see your way to join us with some of those. We do some very interesting things to connect the community with our elected representatives. Thanks, Pat, for gold seeing. He's always very generous with allowing us to use his facilities for community events like this. And I also want to thank Wesley B., who provides video services for a lot of the events, so that the people who can't be here can view it online. And we'll have that posted and a link out for people to follow and look at if they weren't here. Also, Sherri Gilmore is the lovely and talented Dana White. She's our countdown lady. The candidates will have two minutes to provide opening and closing statements, one at the beginning, one at the end, hence names, and one minute to answer each question. She will be the timer. When they get down to fifteen seconds, she'll hold up three fingers to let them know, and then two, and then one, and then kind of stop when she pulls the last number down, regardless of whether you're done with her explanation. Some real simple rules to follow. We're going to cheer once at the beginning, and then you can cheer once at the end, but let's not be noisy throughout. We want to be able to hear what these people are saying, the thoughts that they're going to share with us on the first roll of this ticket, so as to show them the respect that they deserve for sticking their necks out to run for this office. So with that, let's give more applause.
Pat, sorry, but can I just make a disclosure?
Yes.
Okay, just because I feel that everyone needs to know that Pat has endorsed both the candidates sitting next to us. That was not disclosed to us at any time, and then he was also the sole recipient of all the questions, and also the one who sorted through them and chose which ones to ask. And I only want to bring that up only because if this is supposed to be impartial and unbiased, I think we all need to put that out. We need to put that out. Thank you.
I mean, you jumped around a little bit, August, because I was going to say the process we used, we reached out to the community to get the questions that you would find most interesting to have answered for this process. We got input from the superintendent, we got input from the president of the Teachers' Association, I got input from other school board members, not from this board, but from one out in Sacramento, the Sacramento area, and from East Side Union High School district. And I got some from the community board, so we've got a wide variety, and rather than call them, I sorted them into what, to me, was a logical order. So I don't think any question that came to me was not included in the program. But thank you for pointing that out. So anyway, that's, yeah, from my point of view. You're wrong, you're jolly.
Two minutes.
Two minutes, and they're going from Balaji down this way for the opening statements.
They should be in the front.
Should be put it out in the front.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, we don't.
Yeah.
Put it out in the front.
Yeah.
What's going on?
Erase that part of the tape, wash.
Yeah. There's a step on the right.
Oh, this was.
Down, sit, you okay? I'll be one second.
Maybe put it in.
That's as far as you can go.
So, good evening, community members. Thank you for taking your time to join us today. Thanks to the candidates, District Eight, community down table, and Pat for moderating. I am Balaji Wengitraman. I'm a candidate for trustee of Evergreen School Board, and I see many familiar faces in the audience today, but briefly to introduce myself. I have a PhD in computer science, I'm a faculty member in San Jose State, teaching graduate and undergraduate classes. I am an executive in a top-down software company. I've been involved in our school district for the last eighteen years since my sons were in kindergarten at Town Motors Motto, Clark, and Quimby, and I've served as trustee twice. And my priority, my focus has been the mission of Evergreen Schools is to provide the best quality education to our children, and to make sure that every student has the same opportunity to achieve, to maintain small class sizes, and to ensure that the support of staff and teachers, to maintain and keep open all neighborhood schools, including Dow Hill and Norwood, and to make sure that the district remains financially viable. And in doing all this, my non-starter has always been what is the right thing to do for the students, for the district, for the community, and for the staff. And so that has been the principle. I have consensus better on the board, and I've always tried to do the right thing every single time, irrespective of what the consequences are. So that is what I stand for, and so I am Balaji Wengitraman. Ask for your support and vote for me this November. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Balaji Wengitraman. I'm honored to have been your trustee for the last eight years here at the Evergreen Elementary School District Board. I want to thank Pat and Pastor John, all of you for coming out here, Wes for videography, and the candidates for making this a very democratic and lively campaign. Much like my colleague Balaji, my focus for the last eight years has been stability, has been financial stability, it's been making sure that our kids get the resources that they need so that they get a first-rate education. That what brought me to the board eight years ago was when, 2008, when a board member came to me and said, "We're really in hard times and just negotiating an agreement that would raise class sizes and cut busing and gate and arts and close libraries." I was very, very distressed about that, and two years later, when my eight-year term on the planning mission was over, I decided to run, and that was my goal, was to return these services to our kids. So it's all about our community and our kids, keeping the schools open, keeping the class sizes small, and to live up to the promises we made to our community. We passed a partial tax, and we're asking for another partial tax. Tax says, "Keep the class size small, keep arts, keep music," and that's what I focus on. The other thing is, is that the thirty years in bio tech, being semi-retired for a while, I decided to see what's really like, because people said to me, "You're on the board, but you don't know what it's like to be a teacher." So after thirty years, I am in the classroom, for the last two years, teaching eighth-grade math in a Title I B site in a school. Thank you very much.
I'm just going to stay right here. I talk a lot, so I need a stay, I need a paper. So, good evening. My name is Patty Andrade, and I currently have three boys in the district, two at Quimby and one at Clark. I am currently the Quimby PTSA president, the advocacy chair at Clark PTA, I am the director of advocacy for the Sixth District PTA, which oversees all the PTAs in Santa Clara, Santa Cruz, and Monterey Counties. I lost my place, I'm sorry. And I'm also substitute teacher. I decided to become a candidate for the school board because it became apparent that the board needs new leadership. We need board members that truly put students first, board members that actively engage with all the stakeholders, the students, the families, staff, and community members. And don't wait for a special occasion to engage. Board members should be aware of issues and concerns, as well as be aware of the successes of our schools. Board members should also be living... What? Our brand promise, part of it reads, "We embody the warmth of a family, one that looks out for one another at all times. Our people are our greatest resource, and the relationships with and among that resource must be nourished in every interaction, every communication." I have been involved in the school district since our oldest began kindergarten, 2010. I began as a volunteer and advocate, then a substitute teacher. What I need you to know about me is this: I am passionate about our schools. I believe in our brand promise, and I am living it. I am here to move the district forward, to make changes, and improve the education experience of our students. I have been busy creating my one-year goals, searching for alternative funding, and will soon be coordinating efforts with some of our legislators. I am here to make a difference, and I look forward to working with you all. Thank you.
Please wait until the end of the program for applause.
Hi, everyone. I'm Marissa Hansen. I said so many of you don't know me, I'm going to tell you a little bit about me. So I started my career twenty-five years ago at Leva Middle School. It was pretty exciting. I had just finished my Phase One of student teaching, and Clifford Black, at the time, as you know, later became superintendent, hired me because he liked what he was seeing on my first experience with students. So I wound up teaching at Leva for the next six years. I also coached track with Rich Clavery, wonderful man. I did that for five of those years. I really enjoyed my time at Leva, but my intention was always to teach high school. So I decided to go teach in the East Side Union High School District. I picked Silver Creek because that's where the Leva students go. During that time, I also knew that I wanted to teach at the New High School, which at that time, we didn't have a name yet, but we eventually called it Evergreen Valley High School, so I was one of the founding teachers. I had said from the beginning of my teaching career that I was someday going to teach there. So that's something that you should know about me, is that when I commit to something, I follow through. So after I'd been there for a while, all of a sudden, times started getting bad, education started having issues, and I became the president of the teachers' union. There are twelve hundred teachers in the East Side Union High School District, and I was honored to represent them for eleven years. That was a pretty exciting time. During that time, I learned about budget, I learned about negotiations, I learned about right from wrong. There's always the truth is in the middle. It isn't necessarily one side or the other, and so I always did an investigation. I was very partial, I made sure that I represented members well, but I also knew that the community is important, and that students need quality teachers. So one thing you will know about me is I'm very strong about what I do, and I think really passionately about what I do, and that's important to me. So having that experience, it was a great experience, I appreciated it, and then I came back now to teaching. So I'm back at Silver Creek High School, just kind of full circle, where I started in the district eighteen years ago, and so I'm enjoying that. I see the students in the Evergreen School District, and I appreciate being here today.
Hi, my name is Chris Corpus, and I'm born and raised San Jose, which is kind of odd, but I'm also born and raised professionally here in the Evergreen School District. I was a teacher and a school principal, and worked all my years in the Evergreen School District. So I know a little bit about the history of the district, and I do have a little bit of experience in the problem-solving that goes along with the ups and downs of the school district. I was here during the rapid growth years, when they were building all these houses, and now we're in here in the years where the houses no longer have as many children as they used to have. That has nothing to do with anything, except that that's the demographics, that's the real truth, that the school districts just need to figure out how to solve it, how to green, how to keep the excellent programs going, and support the teachers during the down times. The biggest thing, though, is the having, you know, student success. I don't think any one of those five is going to say that we're not interested in student success, that we're not interested in strong families in the community, that we don't differentiate ourselves like that. However, I do have the years of experience, and I wouldn't say I know where the skeletons are buried about certain things, but I do know how the various aspects of budgeting were built over the years, and how it was important that sometimes, and sometimes the very important things had to go away, just because it was those were bad economic times. So again, I'm looking forward to bringing my skills and experience, and also my ability to do empathy and respect, because that has been lacking recently. Not saying that I can fix that, but that's what I need.
I must have forgotten to tell you a whole lot of the ones until the end of the program. Sorry, I forgot to tell you. Can we just start off with a simple show of hands? Who here is supporting major? Oop. Yours, yeah, okay. That's what I thought, so we'll skip over that question. And this is going to go from you, then down that way. Who are your major endorsers, Chris?
That's an interesting question. I run my campaign as a grassroots campaign, so if you want fancy names, I don't have that necessarily. I do have my good friend Will Eckler, who's superintendent of the area, so he's also just my good friend, so he'll endorse the anti-... I didn't think I had that. But the biggest thing is grassroots, I do have all the teachers and lots of retirees in the Evergreen School District supporting me, because they know, they can vouch for my integrity, and they know what I stand for. So that's who I'm going to bring on, just the everyday people.
Okay, good.
All right, and my major endorsements are teachers. I'm endorsed by the teachers of the Allen Rock Association, my own teachers, East Side Teachers Association, and of course, the teachers in the Evergreen School District. I'm also endorsed by South Bay Labor, the Democratic Party, and Bay Mac. And if you're not familiar with Bay Mac, they fight for LGBT rights.
I'm endorsed by the Evergreen Teachers Association, South Bay Labor Council, the Democratic Party, and also, this is just the large?
The large.
The main, okay. Dawn, which is the democracy, or I might even remember the... Anyway, it's the Democrats for Women Now, so those are my major ones.
Good evening. I'm endorsed by many community members, believe it or not, some teachers. I've been endorsed by Mayor Ricardo, by former Vice Mayor Rose Herrera, by Jimmy Nguyen, by Denise Belizzi, by a number of community leaders, and activists, and volunteers, and I've been endorsed by the Villages, by the Villages GOP. I would like to say, like Chris, the community has asked me to continue to run, and many parents and friends have said, "You really do need to stay on the board." So if that counts, then I'll put them as my endorsers as well.
Thank you. I too am running a grassroots campaign, endorsed by community business leaders, current and former trustees, administrators, many teachers, my San Jose faculty, community members, Nathan Garryson, Martin Bell, a lot of community members and business leaders. And I am, this is a nonpartisan position, so while I used to be affiliated with a major party, when I started running, I declined to stay. I'm not endorsed by any major party, I do not seek any special interest endorsement. I'm independent, the only person that I advocate for, only teams that I advocate for are students, staff, teachers, and our district. Thank you.
All right, who said your first one on this one? What is being a supporter of public education going to do? Pardon? One minute. Yes.
Well, being a supporter of public education means that I'm trying to make sure that every student has the opportunity to succeed. This goal for all of us is to get these kids onto high school, and they're my student. So that's what I want to see. I want to make sure that we provide them with the things that they need, that may need school supplies, they may need teachers that have things like smart boards, it may mean that we need to have things that they can get to school. There's, they need food, we want to make sure that we have a great lunch program. All those things will help make public education good for our students.
Repeat the question, please, just one more.
Oh, sure. How would you handle community... No, sorry. I'm going to... Why would you be a supporter of public education going to do?
Okay. So to me, it means making sure that our kids have the highest quality education, not just with the books and the computers and all the wonderful technology and programs. I also believe, as I have learned from my kids' experience, that you need to have the right people in the classroom that are qualified and passionate, and it's not just in the classroom. You also have to make sure that the staff that your children are surrounded by are also qualified and actually want to be there, because it makes a difference. And if you've ever met my kids, they get up in the morning, they love to go to school, and I'm talking about a seventh and an eighth grader. So that's what public education, that should be what everybody wants to send their kids. And unfortunately, okay, there is this misconception that our kids will get a better education in someplace else. They're wrong.
To me, public education boils down to one word, equity. It's a word that means that everybody gets what they need so they can compete on a level playing field. Public education is provided by the public. That means the funds that the public pays into our taxes goes to the kids. It goes to creating communities where the school is the heart of that community. It goes to having the resources necessary to make sure everybody could achieve in a 21st century economy. So to me, public education is providing what's necessary and not favoring any one particular group over another. Thank you.
To me, public education is definitely providing high-quality education, so that each student can realize their full potential, and we need to close the achievement gap, because there's a wide disparity between achievement in several schools and Title I schools versus other schools, number one, and this achievement needs, this education needs to happen in a safe and nurturing environment. A lot of our children are, so it is not just book knowledge, but also making sure that the child is supported in the class, in the society, in the community, with a solid foundation for mental health, and so that they can succeed in their life, number one. And number two, I believe in making sure that the local schools are available, so that the communities can bring a lot of energy to all those schools. Thank you.
All right, Patty, your first one.
No, Chris.
Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry.
All right. Public school, they're the best things in sliced bread, right? I mean, how else can a democracy be forward if we can't rely on an educated populace? So there are many things a school board member can do, but mostly to be a champion of the great schools that we have, and also outside of the system, and make sure that the proper funding comes our way. As you might know, Evergreen School District is funded according to the farm days, not like the urban schools that get new funding now. So that can change. So my deal is, I believe in the power of education, it must be for everybody, and if I'm going to do anything, it would be to tell the positive narratives of the Evergreen School District, and also to talk to those that hold the power for the funding.
Thank you. Now, Patty, you get to respond to this question.
Awesome.
How would you handle community outreach and engagement if you're elected?
So two words frame that, and that's communication and transparency. What we need to do is reach out to the community in a way that's timely and frequent. So I've seen best practices at other schools where they do weekly newsletters that are formal weekly newsletters, that are packed with information that's specific to the things that parents need to know and what's going on in all the schools. I also think that we need to use public media more often and more effectively, and the other is having town hall meetings on a, let's say, monthly basis, so that the community can come in and voice their concerns and voice their opinions. This is a very large district, so we need to have them in places around the district so that many people can participate. Thank you.
Followed, how would you handle community outreach and engagement if you're elected?
So I currently serve as a trustee, and my community outreach is not just when there's an election. I am always out there in the community, talking to parents and community members and getting their feedback, and it's all about transparency. The, look, this community has fifty thousand owners, and there are seventy people there. The issues that surround our school district, the budgeting process, is our key. So we need to make sure that we make it easy for our community members to understand, to engage, to give input to us, so that we can make the right decision, and the board and the district reflects the aspirations of the community members. So we need to be out there, the LCAP meetings, the SIS meetings, needs to happen in the community, the town halls need to happen. We cannot rely on a survey and hope that you'll get the right feedback. We need to be out there engaging our community in a meaningful dialogue, not a one-way conversation.
Yeah. Get the clear box out. All right, Chris, how would you handle community outreach and engagement if you're elected?
Same way I did when I did work with all the family in the school district, and that's mostly around the events that happen in every school. Schools have great traditions of, what do we have, coming up with fall festivals and these types of things, and I can't say I can go to all of them, because many times they happen at the same time, of course. But I will be around and go to as many as I can, making sure that I go to at least one event at each one of the schools. That's how people could catch up with me if they want to. I like the idea of the town hall, town hall system, that's a good way to communicate, a way for people to interact with the decision makers, which the school board members are pulling in their feet. So the important thing is to be out about and to support some of the other civic groups that have events that they would like to be publicized. That's my thing.
Thank you, Chris. Marissa, how would you handle community outreach and engagement if you're elected?
So I think the first thing is, I would have an open house, a, "Hi, I'm your new school board member, come meet me," because that's what I do. I'm Latina who loves to talk to people face-to-face, I like to interact with people. So I think the fact would come to mind first. I would probably do a separate email address, because I know that works for my school board members in the East Side Union High School District. They have, although they have district email, they also have a separate email address that goes just for business with the community. And so getting those emails and making sure that I respond to them, and then if somebody says they'd like to meet with me, because that's what works in my district, we constantly meet with our board members, we have a conversation with them, whether it be on the phone or in person, and then later, as I start to create relationships, then I can talk about what other ideas I want to do, I can get some feedback from them, I'd be open to any other sessions where all of us are attending, but I mean, if we're talking about what would I do, these are the type of things that I would do, because I would be somebody that people don't know yet, and so I would spend the time for letting them get to know me.
Thank you, Marissa. All right, Patty, you're up for the first shot on this.
Didn't everybody go? I already went. It's Jim.
It's all right.
Who talks about... Jim, what are your top three priorities?
Top three priorities for this district are fiscal stability, keeping schools open, and keeping class sizes small. Those are my three top, and the reason for that is as following: you cannot run a school district if your finances are not in order. You need stability, and you need predictability, and you need a balanced budget. Second is, schools open. Why? Because they are the heart and soul of the community. Our schools have at least three hundred kids in every single school. To say that a school is obsolete, or too small, or needs to close and be consolidated, I just can't fathom that at this point, and for the simple reason that the school is the heart. And again, small class sizes, because it matters. Being in the classroom, I can tell you firsthand, smaller class sizes matter.
Yeah. All right, Chris, how would you handle community outreach and engagement if you're elected?
Same way I did when I did work with all the family in the school district. And that's mostly around the events that happen in every school. Schools have great traditions of, what do we have, coming up with fall festivals and these types of things. And I can't say I can go to all of them, because many times they happen at the same time, of course. But I will be around and go to as many as I can, making sure that I go to at least one event at each one of the schools. That's how people could catch up if they want to. I like the idea of the town hall, town hall system. That's a good way to communicate, a way for people to interact with the decision makers, which the school board members are willing to be. So the important thing is to be out about and to support some of the other civic groups that have events that they would like to be publicized. That's my thing.
Thank you, Chris. Marissa, how would you handle community outreach and engagement if you're elected?
So I think the first thing is I would have an open house, a, hi, I'm your new school board member, come meet me. Because that's what I do. I'm Latina who loves to talk to people face-to-face, I like to interact with people. So I think the fact would come to mind first. I would probably do a separate email address, because I know that works for my school board members in the East Side High School District. They have, although they have district email, they also have a separate email address that goes just for business with the community. And so getting those emails and making sure that I respond to them. And then if somebody says they'd like to meet with me, because that's what works in my district. We constantly meet with our board members, we have a conversation with them, whether it be on the phone or in person. And then later, as I start to create relationships, then I can talk about what other ideas I want to do. I can get some feedback from them, I'd be open to any other sessions where all of us are attending. But I mean, if we're talking about what would I do, these are the type of things that I would do, because I would be somebody that people don't know yet. And so I would spend the time for letting them get to know me.
Thank you, Marissa. All right, Patty, you're up for the first shot on this.
Didn't everybody go, I already went. It's Jim.
Jim?
It's all right.
Jim, what are your top three priorities?
Top three priorities for this district are fiscal stability. Keeping schools open and keeping class sizes small. Those are my three top. And the reason for that is as following. You cannot run a school district if your finances are not in order. You need stability, and you need predictability, and you need a balanced budget. Second is, schools open, why? Because they are the heart and soul of the community. Our schools have at least 300 kids in every single school. To say that a school is obsolete, or too small, or needs to close and be consolidated, I just can't fathom that at this point. And for the simple reason that the school is the heart. And again, small class sizes, because it matters. Being in the classroom, I can tell you firsthand, smaller class sizes matter.
All right, my top three priorities, number one, provide top quality education. Focus on that hand, because we can do a lot of things, but parents can send their children to school so that they can be educated. So that's enough for all. Education was a ticket to my success, I came here, put myself through college, got myself a great education, but that's why I'm sitting in the chair today. So education, number one. Number two, maintain small class sizes as best we can, because that's where they can have the right outcomes for the children and lay the right foundation for their academic success. And number three is, keep the schools open. Keep neighborhood schools open, because that is where the schools, the children go. Our schools are not buildings, they are temple of learning, that's where communities gather together. And that's why we need to keep every single school open and provide education on a one-on-one basis. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Chris. What are your top three priorities?
My top three are not that different from anybody else, because that's what schools are, right? School districts, that's what we focus on. So fiscal stability is a big deal, it's always been a big deal in the Evergreen School District. We have the tradition of making sure that the budget is strong, supportive of solid education in beautiful schools. You can see how our schools are being renovated as facilities. But more importantly, supporting the teachers so that they can carry out the innovative programs that they're the ones that actually do. So again, having that fiscal stability is important. The other one is the school safety. I'm sure prior candidates were also saying that, but that's a big deal these days. We don't want it to be a big deal, but that is a big deal, and your E E does put money in that direction. But also goes about making sure that all students know what to do in a tough situation.
Thank you. Marissa, what are your top three priorities?
So for fiscal stability, yes, that's super important to me. I've spent a lot of time in my past, in my past job as the president of the local, and really looking at the school budget. And so really making decisions on what we're spending the money on, reviewing how we're spending the money, and trying to make sure that we spend it correctly. Because in the end of the day, we are here to spend money on students, and we want to make sure that we're doing that. And in order to do that, we have to have quality employees. Funding for education needs to change. We still need more funding in California, so I have spent a lot of time in Sacramento, and I will continue to do that to fight for more funding for education so that we can continue to give the students the funding that they need so that they can have the education that they want. And then work, and work out, trying to work and find out why we're in such a declining enrollment. Because in my district, Silver Creek and Evergreen Valley High School are busting up the seams. That's where these students go. So I'm a little confused as why this district is in declining enrollment when our high schools that surround this district are fairly full.
Thank you. Patty, what are your top three priorities?
As a parent, obviously PTA member, and as a substitute teacher, I can tell you that one of the things that I've realized that needs to change is we need a district culture. We need to, it doesn't exist, right? If you go to your schools, especially as parents, you send your kids there, you have your family. We don't have that. There is no pride in our school district. You can talk to any parent and they'll tell you how proud they are of their schools, how much they love them. We need that. I will create that district culture, because that's what I do. And then also, labor peace. Yay, we have a tentative agreement, but the board still hasn't voted on it. They won't vote till next week, so it's tentative, we still don't know. That should continue. As a board member, I will build those relationships so we don't have the tension that we are barely getting over. And last, find innovative ways to fund our schools. We keep depending on Sacramento, we need to figure our own way out. Thank you.
Thank you. Polly, you're up. What specific plans would you recommend for supporting and improving our public schools?
So, public school, as I said earlier, the priority, my priority is education. And that education can be delivered only if, as other members have said, if you have the right funding model, we are able to attract the right teachers, provide them the right facilities, the right equipment, make sure there is equity in the technology and the classrooms and the facilities that are available for each teacher. So the programs is number one, make sure that we have equitable distribution of resources across the entire district, one. Two, declining enrollment is not confusing to me. I know why that is happening, it's because of the cost of living, it is because parents and children are going to other districts. So how do we bring that back? By offering programs of choice, dual language programs, ID, other programs to attract students so that we can support this entire district and provide the quality of education that we need to.
Thank you. Chris. What specific plans would you recommend for supporting and improving our public schools?
Our public schools depend on the teachers, so a strong program that provides for training for teachers, but also a strong program and focus on attracting and retaining the teachers we have. You can see in the newspaper, teachers are leaving, it's tough to leave here. And also, we could attract the veteran teachers throughout the valley who used to always want to come here. And you think that, it's still true, it's just that we've gotten lost in our narrative where something we believe is not true. I don't go around and talk to teachers, and it is true. Second thing is to invest in innovative programs. If you go to any of our schools, you will see the fantastic things that they're doing, and we need to support them with the money and the funding that goes with it. And also, again, the importance of school safety, and that's gonna be, if children love to come to school, everything can happen.
Marissa, what specific plans would you recommend for supporting and improving our public schools?
I want to make sure we're spending the money. We don't need a large reserve. Per the rules, it needs to be 3%. The district has well over 3%, so why are we keeping the money in the bank instead of using it on students? So one way we use it on students is we make sure that we hire staff. I didn't mention this earlier, but I have a son who has special needs. And every day, when he gets brought home, he's on a bus that has a contractor. That is a waste of money. The district should hire more bus drivers, for example. So I think that we have to really relook at how we spend our money so that we can spend it in a better way. We find more of the in-house type of staff, then that's gonna help us in the end, it's gonna save us money. And so I think that's really important, so that's one of the things that just comes to mind. We really need to make sure that we support our special needs children, and we don't spend too much money at hiring contractors for them.
Thank you. What specific plans would you recommend for supporting and improving our public schools?
Okay, well, I think first of all, we should look to the schools themselves and say, hey, what is it that your school is known for? At Clark, we already, well, if you don't know, performing arts, right? We all know that there's gonna be a one, two, or three performances per year. Maybe that's what that school wants to be known for.
Maybe there's, there's also PBL, right?
So for example, you go to Quimby or Leva, hey, you know what, we have Bulldog Tech, we have LSI. That's what we're known for, that's our strength. You have STEAM at your school, let's highlight that. But we don't do that, and we don't share it. For example, I'm part of the council PTA here, and we share our ideas. And that's, you know, yeah, sure, we're bragging too, we're proud of our schools and the work we do, but it's about highlighting what our strengths are, and that's what I would concentrate on. We need to work with our schools, not try to decide that we know best. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It's your turn.
Jim, what specific plans would you recommend for supporting and improving our public schools?
Well, first thing is we have to stabilize our finances. Because we can't keep going through cycles of cut and spend and cut and spend. And that's what we've been doing over the last few years, is we get money in from the state, and then all of a sudden, we have to cut things because we spent too much. So putting a balanced budget together, one that looks forward not just to tomorrow or the next day, but out four or five years. So we have fiscal stability for a while. We have to be able to weather the storm when the finances go up and down. So how do we do that? Well, we use best practices around other districts. Other people have done this for years. And we tried to do this, but we don't quite have our hands around it yet, because there's a lot of competition for those funds. The other is to reach out to the outside and create those private, private, yeah, try it again, private-public partnerships, okay? Innovative programs and work together with the community.
Chris, you're leading off.
Wait, did you answer?
Yeah, he started.
Yeah, he started.
As a board member, you have no individual authority but must work with four other board members to accomplish goals. How well are you able to collaborate with those, sorry, with those who disagree with you?
I'll just have to, I hate to harp on my experience, but that's what I've done. I base my career on collaboration, building consensus, meeting with people, understanding exactly what others need, and then being very truthful when I can't deliver what they want, but explaining where the compromise may lie, or just the place where I get stuck, we can rock the other place. And that's all we can do is be trust. But yes, we are one of five voices, we're not an individual school board, we're five individuals. And I know over the years, I've seen votes come out of the school board meetings, sometimes it is 5-0. But I actually, because I knew the folks, I knew that behind the doors, it was tough. It was 3-2, 2-3, until they all came out and we voted 5-0 with a lot of discussion.
You know, the whole question or the question? As a board member, you have no individual authority but must work with four other board members to accomplish goals. How well are you able to collaborate with those who disagree with you?
So I think that I have some really good skills at this. So I just finished being a president of a local that had 1,200 teachers. I used to meet with the superintendent regularly, and I used to meet with the school board members regularly. So I know what it's like to disagree. So the superintendent and I often would meet, so I would hope to do that in the future with this district. And then I would meet with board members, and sometimes we would disagree. But at the end of the day, we all respected each other. Those board members, many of them have endorsed me. The superintendent, he actually gave me an award at a board meeting, telling me he appreciated that I fought for students and I fought for teachers, and I was listening to the community. So that's pretty much a high honor to me, that if the superintendent of a local that you were president for commends you for your good work, then that just shows my integrity and who I am.
I think I got it. I work well with people. If you're an adult, it isn't difficult, you disagree. I know pretty much all of us, in case you missed it, we all greeted each other, we all interact with each other. Jim and I have served on PTA together, okay? Yeah, we've had our differences, but guess what? All of us here, I like to think that, I mean, I expect and assume who's gonna be on the board, but I like to think that whomever does get on the board, we all get along. Like I said, it's not difficult, be an adult and move forward. Sometimes you need to be put in your place, that's just the reality, it's happened.
So it boils down to trust and respect. Everybody that is on the board brings a special set of skills with them. And to trust that they are using that skills in the right, or should I say, for the right purpose, and respect where they come from, and to say, you know, maybe I'm not an expert in that field. When I got on the board, I was not an expert in education. But to some people, I was an expert in finance, I was an expert in projects. So that's what I brought to the board, to respect each other for what they bring, their uniqueness, their individuality. But also to collaborate and not feel afraid to speak your mind. And if it comes down to a vote of a 3-2 or a 4-1, you should be able to feel comfortable to say, that is what's in my heart, that's what I believe is important for the kids, and to not feel intimidated by that. It's okay to disagree, as long as you respect each other and move forward.
So I have the ability to have competing thoughts in my head and try to a consensus. There is no one right answer. So you talk to the community, you talk to your fellow board members, you talk to the administration, they are the experts, you talk to the teachers, they're in the classroom, get the input so that you can figure out what the right policy structure has to be. Come from a place of trust, be ethical, be transparent. And in my case, I'm independent, I'm not beholden to the labor union, I'm not beholden to the administration, no. My North Star has been students, staff, community, district. So for me, from that perspective, in two seats on the board, I've usually been on the majority, and that's kind of a definition of building consensus. I work on consensus, I build policy based on my principles, do what you say and say what you do. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Marissa. Often decisions the board must make are complex with no one good answer. How would you approach challenging problems, and are you able to compromise your personal beliefs for the good of your order?
All right, so I think that any type of issue, you're gonna have a certain belief, but at the same time, you really have to look at what other people are telling you what they want and what they need. So I think I would spend time really talking to one board member, as I'm allowed for the Brown Act, and at least have one person that I could talk to before we had to go to a board meeting. What's nice is an enclosed session, then you can actually have more conversations with the other board members. So that's one thing that I've always done, is like I said earlier, the truth is always in the middle. So I know that I have to listen to both sides and not just say, this is the way it should be. So I'm really good at making sure that I do that, and then maybe my mind will change. And if that's the case, then I will do that.
Thank you. Again, often decisions the board must make are complex with no one good answer. How would you approach challenging problems, and are you able to compromise your personal beliefs for the good of your order?
Well, I think if it's a difficult decision, you're probably discussing this as a board, and you're probably working with the cabinet and relevant parties. So you're going to be collaborating with others. That just seems pretty obvious. And then as far as, am I willing to compromise my beliefs? That's kind of, to me, I mean, it depends on what you're asking for and what the belief is. But in general, if it's for the good of the school district or the good of the students, or depending on what it is, well, yes, I think so, but there are certain beliefs I wouldn't, it depends on what you're asking me for. Certain beliefs, no, I'm not gonna compromise on, because that's just immoral and unethical.
It's situational, right?
Yes, it depends on the situation. So, but I work well with people, and I will collaborate and listen to those that will present. Thank you.
Thank you. It's not music, Chris. Do you want to hear it again, Jim?
Sure, why not?
Often decisions the board must make are complex with no one good answer. How would you approach challenging problems, and are you able to compromise your personal beliefs for the good of your order?
Okay, so being on the board for the last eight years, trust me, there have been many, many complex questions that come before us. And what I always come down to in my head is, what's the problem you're trying to solve? Okay, from that, I go to my principles. And my principles are very simple. Invest as close to the students as you can and cut as far away as you can. When I've got those three foundation principles that I start with, then I go from there. And a lot of it is collaborating with my partners to hear what they have to say. Most of our discussion cannot happen behind closed doors or enclosed session, because there are things that have to happen in open session. And so giving everybody the opportunity to talk, and if it takes an hour, it takes an hour. If it takes two hours, it takes two hours. That's what it takes to get down to it. And can I compromise my own feelings? Absolutely. It's happened way more than one time in the last eight years. And listening to others, I learn a lot.
So I start on this board and other nonprofit, like the Santa Clara Homeless Healthcare Board. We are responsible for providing healthcare for the homeless and the senior citizens in this country. None of these problems are easy, but you have to have strong ethical principles. And when you make a decision, you have to base those on whatever your guiding principles are. For the school district, it is again, students, staff, community, district. Those are the guiding principles. So can I compromise on a policy structure to arrive with a better solution for my stakeholders? Yes. Would it mean that I'm compromising my values? Absolutely not. Case in point, last October, when we were in the midst of a financial crisis, I refused to compromise on my belief that we need to keep schools open, and that's why I wanted to keep that one down. I would not compromise on principles, but I would compromise with a team to effect structural policy changes. Thank you.
All problems are challenging, my goodness. But it's the, it's affecting everybody to bring solutions to the table and finding a way to stitch them all together. So it is the best solution. So, it is the best solution. And so, it is about making sure that a culture of respect and empathy is within a group, a small group of five board members or a larger group of the entire school district. That's one of the tough things. And sometimes you make a decision that you know might be a reversible decision, that down the road, you might have to walk backwards on it because things have changed. So, the, the, one of the important things in, in decision-making and making sure that you're working with everybody is do a pro con charter, plus minus charter. We did that a lot in education. That's a good way to approach problems. It's a good way to get dialogue going to a final and unified vote.
Is she first now?
Yes. I have to order them down now, so.
I'm like, you're cute. Yeah, I think I have to.
Well, the board's primary responsibilities is hiring and evaluating the superintendent. What qualities do you believe are most important in a superintendent? And what criteria do you use to evaluate the superintendent?
Well, leadership, for one. And then I would like to know what her, I'm saying her, their experience. You know, where are they coming from? Are they coming from education? What I would wanna check, background, resources, because you need to talk to these people. You need to see, you know, when they, wherever they're coming from. What do people think of them? Were they respected? You know, what's their experience? How did they interact with people? What kind of personality do they have? Because guess what? Leadership and personality styles matter, okay? Some people are standoffish. A lot of people don't know how to deal with people like that. Some people are very welcoming and warm. And I'd like to use the example with PTA, right? I give workshops through Sixth District PTA, and I always talk about, you know, we have our elementary principal, who's very warm and welcoming, and then last year, we had Mr. Bond, who was a little more, you know, keeping his distance. But you need to learn how to deal with that. So, I will look at the personalities and leadership styles and reference it.
Thank you.
So, superintendent is the CEO of the district that answers to the board. He's the only employee that the board has. The superintendent needs to be somebody who can collaborate with the board, who could provide leadership for the board, especially in, in areas of policy and with ed code and so on. So, those are the things they really need to be very strong in. You also have to be strong in financials. They have to understand what's going on. They have to understand the climate of the finances of the state, where our money's coming from. And if we're not going to get what we need to run the district effectively, where to go to get it. So, a person that goes out there like a diplomat and works with private public partnerships and brings in the support that we need. Also, somebody who has a vision and who could execute the vision that the board brings, because ultimately, the board is responsible for the running of the district. The superintendent executes on that vision.
Indeed, the superintendent is the only employee of the, of the board and is the CEO. The superintendent needs to be leader. What is leadership? My leadership to me is that the superintendent should be trusting and trustworthy, should be able to execute to a line, should understand the business of running a school district. Should be good with numbers, right? We all have said repeatedly that we are reliant on Sacramento and its whims to fund our schools. And this is a yo-yo funding model. And so, we need to give the project how that funding is gonna change. What should be the priorities? Articulate that priority to the community so that we can get feedback and not have something in their back pocket. Number one. And two, what is leadership? To me, leadership is the superintendent should be a servant leader. Not sit in the office, not attend L cap meetings, and let the cabinet agree that you're a servant leader.
Thank you.
First of all, just take five seconds and say, I like Mr. Bond. Good friend of mine.
Me too.
A, a good superintendent, of course, has to be a student center, number one. If they're not that, if they're only like a budget person, all right, we can find those. If there's a good CBO can take care of that. But they have to have a strong vision of where they're going. They have to be able to communicate that. They have to inspire not only the students, but the teachers and the community members, and yes, even the people outside of the community. So, that's very important. They have to be a strong communicator. How else do you inspire folks? By telling stories about the great days and telling stories about, you know, how things might get better because there is, there's something good ahead, and we just need to get through the, the tough times. And finally, they can be an excellent listener. Sometimes that doesn't happen, and that can cause trouble, but I've always hung an arch for a tendency to being old.
So, during the time that I've been in Eastside, I've gotten to know three of our past superintendents really well. And some of the skills that I really appreciated is, like in my current superintendent, being available, being available to the community, being personable. Obviously, I like the fact that my current superintendent in Eastside was a teacher all the way to superintendent. So, if we needed to hire somebody right now, I think something like that would be important to me, and I would look at the resume. Listening, being open, I think that's important. And I really liked recently, when I went to my superintendent and I asked him about getting involved with CTA. We're working on legislation in Sacramento. And he said, yeah, let's go to Sacramento. He jumped on board. We had teachers, we had community members, we had students. I think that's great, a superintendent that's available for everybody.
Jim, you're reading this off on this one. It's kind of a two-part. Do you believe that a superintendent's contract should be automatically renewed if no action is taken by the board? And should a superintendent's contract provide for an automatic percentage rate equal to what she or he negotiates with the teachers?
Okay. Well, unfortunately, if I understood the correct, the question correctly, we don't have a choice about whether or not the contract renews automatically if it's not notified. That's the law. Should it be that way? I don't believe so. I believe there should be a negotiation, and it should just go month to month, if you will, until you come to some agreement, or you don't come to an agreement and you part ways amicably. But that's the law the way it is now. Second part, if I could get a minute, and what's, what was that again?
Second?
Oh, automatic raises. Okay, thank you. No, absolutely not. I think that all of us, the upper staff, should be merit-based. I think it's important that we put an incentive there for our administrators, frankly, for our principals, and that all raises be merit-based, based on goals that are put forth by the community and by, and when I say community, all the stakeholders, and that is agreed upon.
All right. So, in the previous question, we all said, what do we want in a superintendent? A leader, a communicator, someone who knows business. It's hard to find people like that. When you find someone like that, we want to give them a long-term contract from a strategic perspective so that they can work with the community and build that relationship, work with the board to build that relationship. So, there is a reason to have a good, long-term contract. Should it be automatically renewed? No. There should be a clause that says, it is based on performance, and when that performance is unsatisfactory or satisfactory, then we take our proper action by the majority of the board, number one. And number two, should the raises be automatic? No. Again, we said the superintendent is the CEO of the district, has all these phenomenal qualities. Next measure, come based on the performance. And if the performance is good, happy to give the breaks. If not, they suffer the consequence, just like anyone else would in this tough financial climate.
Thank you.
Oh, you smokes, that's a loaded question. The, the contract with superintendent, that's, that's our leader. And so, in the beginning, the, the school board would actually choose that person, and so, there must be some sort of affinity there. But as they go through the problems of, you know, that come up in the school district, you do look to see how they, how they solve them, how they stand up under pressure. And yes, it is a three-year contract, because there's no, no way that you ask somebody to come in and be great in the first year. There's no kind of leadership position that even does that. In sports, they give, you try and give the person at least five years to turn around a team. So, three years is, is reasonable. In terms of giving them raises, yes, of course, if they're performing. If they're not, there's probably mutual parting ways, because that's the way the, that particular position works.
Thank you, Chris.
So, yeah, I do like the idea that there is that automatic, but at the same time, you can evaluate them, and if they're not performing, then you can come up with a plan on how you might change that superintendent. So, far as the ratings, one of the things that I liked that my district changed was that the superintendent doesn't get automatically whatever the rest of the staff gets. The board gets to decide if the superintendent gets that. And I think that makes a lot of sense, because the superintendent is kind of the lead on negotiations. So, superintendent says, hey, the teachers are gonna get three percent. And then they, and then the superintendent automatically gets a three percent. That's not appropriate. And I think that's what my board decided. And so, I thought about it, and we spent a lot of time talking about it, and then that made a lot of sense to me. The board has the authority to say, you know what? Now that the teachers are, have a contract, we're also gonna pass it on to the superintendent and also the other district employees. But I think that's an appropriate way to do it, that the board votes on it after it's already been ratified.
No. So, it shouldn't be automatic. That doesn't seem right. And pretty much, I could repeat what everyone else said or give you a, I mean, they should earn it. And I agree with Marissa. You know, shouldn't, they shouldn't automatically get whatever the teachers get. So, mine was simple.
I like short and sweet answers. Definitely.
Oh, sorry. Oh, no.
Thank you, buddy.
All right. The district is experiencing declining enrollment. We've talked about that a little bit here. What impact does this have on the resources available for providing quality education for the remaining students? And what steps would you advocate to attract and retain students?
It's a great question. And one of the defining challenges of this election, of this, of what our community has gone through for the last eight years, months. In the last ten years, we have lost three thousand students, plus or minus, and that has had a significant impact on the top line revenue. And some schools have been impacted more than others. And surprisingly, it is not, that the school with the maximum decline in the person rate is actually in Cameron Clark. It's not Leva or Delta. So, we should not close those schools, number one. I mean, Longwood and Delta. So, what might you try? Number one, make sure that we provide good programs, good, good education opportunities, equity, dual-language programs, ID programs, programs that attract students and keep them rather than they go and drop to our private schools.
Thank you.
First of all, our students aren't leaving because they wanna go someplace else. They're just, the students aren't there. It's an economic problem that the entire state of California is facing. So, what we need to do is look forward and see how we're going to adjust our budgets accordingly to, to, to make the changes that, sometimes hard changes that will come. Luckily, in the state of California, they, they give you the funding of the previous year. So, if you have a downed draft of students, you still have last year's number of students in order to kind of bridge the gap of that, of the loss of twenty. So, so there is time to, to make some changes and make sure that, that everything is being done to, to support students in schools. And then secondly, children and families love their neighborhood school. And that's, and that's the great thing, and that's what we need to work towards. And that's, that's the number one reason why we are still building, rebuilding our school. But a clean and well-rounded place.
So, I remember being at a board meeting probably about a year ago or so, maybe longer. And I remember hearing about the outreach that they were starting to do in this district, and I really was impressed by it. They were talking about how you need to outreach when a child is born. Hi, congratulations, you just had a kid. See them in five years. So, I think that is a really good idea. And I, I don't know how much of that got implemented, and I'm, I'm sure that the current board could probably answer that. But I really was just excited to hear about that, because why not? Because when I get students now at my high school, and one of them says, he just came from a private school, and someone else told me they just came from a charter school, I know that they weren't here. And that's where my concern is, is that why weren't they here? You know, so we gotta figure that out. So, I think that. And then when there's harmony in the district, then people wanna come to this school district. When there was a lot of chaos a couple of weeks ago, I'm sure parents were thinking, maybe I should go to that charter school, maybe I should go to that, that school over there. Maybe I should send my kid to a private school. When the staff is happy, I think everybody's happy.
Again, as Chris said, the students aren't leaving. There are no new families. Look in your neighborhoods. How many of your neighbors are still the same neighbors from years ago? Okay? When our kids finally leave, we're probably still gonna be here, okay? So, let's just be honest about that. Two, the students that have left usually are looking for other programs like dual immersion. That's where they're heading. But that's not a huge amount of kids. I'm sure, you know, the district is aware of approximately how many numbers those are. So, we need to be realistic and be honest with ourselves about why we don't have the kids that we do. And don't forget that declining enrollment is happening everywhere. Just look at Oak Row, okay? This isn't a problem that's just happening to us. Also, again, let's look at our schools. Let's highlight what makes them unique. Each one of our schools has something. Talk to those families, and they will tell you. Talk to those teachers, they will tell you. That will draw people in from other schools.
Thank you.
Districts.
I'm sorry, appreciate the question.
Sure. The district is experiencing declining enrollment. What impact does this have on the resources available, available for providing quality education for the remaining students? What steps would you advocate to attract and retain students?
Okay, so I'll answer the first question, which is, what is the impact? We are a revenue-limit school, which means that, or district, I should say, which means that we get a set amount of funding based on kids in the seats. So, unlike other school districts in other areas that get surplus money because of how much money they bring in property taxes, we don't. So, every kid counts. So, when we lose kids because parents are inconvenienced by the fact that now the student has to, has to wait another year because of the, the age requirements to get into school, or that we have a half-day kindergarten, things like that, then we need to be responsive to that. And that's something that we worked on when I was on the board these last few years, is bring TK in, and not just half-day TK, not just half-day kindergarten, but full day. Because the kids don't, the parents don't have the ability to come in half, halfway through the day to pick up their kid. The other thing is, is to bring in those programs that the parents are asking for. We need to be responsive, and we need to be competitive with what is out there.
Chris?
Sorry.
Down this way. Next question, kind of related. How would you deal with budget challenges and the school district's structural deficit?
First is tough. The, the struc, the structural deficit, yeah, is based on, we, we get our money from the state of California, and we kind of know what it is gonna be. Part of our current deficit, or just our budget problem, is based on the fact that the state of California wants to make the, the teacher and classified pension strong. So, the money they give us is, hey, you can get this, you can get four percent. But two percent of that has to go to the pension cost. And that's a good way to do it, but it's, it's sort of disingenuous to the populace that they say, hey, you got four percent more money. Well, two percent of it is already spent. The, the problems are, have to do with giving, making your priorities and just sticking with the priorities. And sometimes it gets you down to tough, tough decisions. And I've seen those before, and I can be part of the actions that go in there.
Marissa, how would you deal with budget challenges and the structural deficit?
So, I've spent a lot of time doing this in Eastside. Eastside's budget is over three million dollars, so it's about double what the one is in this district. So, yeah, it's a lot of money. So, yeah, it is, yeah, three hundred million. So, with that, the, one of the things I always like to do is I love to look at unranked actuals. What money did we actually spend versus what we budgeted? So, being a geek in math, I love to do that. So, I would do that, and I would actually look at it. Like, today I glanced at it, and I noticed that books and supplies, we declined a lot this year. So, maybe last year was a high year. So, I think I would sit down with our fiscal manager, a person that can really go through the budget with me, and I would really bring up these type of questions. Why did we spend less? What was the plan? Why are we spending more? And really just tear it apart, because that's what I like to do. I look at every little area of the budget, and I ask a lot of questions. And then I talk about, what's a better way to spend the money? Why are we spending so much money in special ed? Why is it going outsourcing jobs? Things like that. I would look it over.
Thank you.
Well, I'm pretty much the same here. You have to sit down and you have to look at where the money is going. Now, I'm a parent, volunteer, right, substitute teacher. I'm learning all about this as I go, which, just to all you parents out there, we represent, we have not been represented for a while. We should be up here, okay? And don't be intimidated by not knowing everything. I don't know everything. I'm learning currently about the budget. I've called the district and said, hey, can somebody please explain this to me? And that is what I am currently learning. And once I sit on that board, they all get to sit down with Patty and explain every single detail. But I can tell you that we need to look at that budget and see, are we overspending? Is there money someplace where maybe we put a little too much in the reserves and we can dip in that? Okay? We need to be honest with ourselves and not over-exaggerate, having a plan for the future, and oh my god, this guy is falling. We need to be a little more realistic. Thank you.
Well, this is the, you know, sixty-four million dollar question. Budget challenges come all the time. Structural deficits occur. But the real key is look at yourselves. What do you do? You plan, okay? It's important to have a fiscal plan that's sound. It's important to have an understanding of where the money's coming from and where the money's going to. It's also important to, to plan for sometimes the worst-case scenario. That said, investment is very, very important. Making the investments, you may spend a little bit more money now, that's gonna save a lot of money in the future. So having that kind of a mindset where you're running the district, and I hate to say this because people really get down on you when you say this, but run the district as a business. Understand where you're going, what is your five-year plan, how to get there, who you partner with. I have a background in that field, and that is where we should be looking. Those fingers are intimidating. Good?
You're done.
You threw her off?
You're done.
I have a half a billion dollar business for my company. We don't prioritize the budget, the budget of our business, right? So let me talk about the structural deficit in our district. Yes, there are state issues and so on and so forth, but the biggest pressure in our budget is because of the declining enrollment. We lost twelve million in top-line revenue. You cannot grow any business, you cannot run any organization by cutting. That's not the way to succeed, number one. Number two, the encroachment by Calbridge, the encroachment because of healthcare benefits, is what is the structural reason for our deficit, right? We spend thirty, thirty point seven six percent on our healthcare, highest in the county compared to Cooper Dino point ten percent. So there are structural issues in our budget. We should look at our budget, prioritize, and then go for that.
Thank you. Marissa, what is your perspective on closing schools?
So I'm a math person, and so when you tell me that a school has half the amount of students that it fills, then I have a concern, because I like to spend money wisely. So I like to spend money based on what my needs are. So if I hear that there are several schools that are half-full, and it makes more sense to merge a school, then that's what I think is right to do. I'm concerned about the fact that we have a school that has mold. I won't send my kid to a moldy school. My kid is a preemie and he has special needs. He cannot be in a school that doesn't provide for him a safe environment. So I'm glad he's that normal kid. He's in a great place. I had a nice time visiting his classroom a couple of weeks ago. So when I look at it, I look at it as, look at the numbers, base the numbers, divide out how many students we have, and do we have a wide amount of schools? Because I know in my district, we might be closing a school in a couple of years. It might be reality. One of our schools is really low because of the fact that there's students going other places.
Well, as a parent, the thought of closing a school kills me, because if it was my school, it would break my heart along with my kids. But the reality is that these two schools, which have been, you know, named for possible school closures, there's a reason for it. One has had mold issues. The other one doesn't have the students. But one of those schools has, what, so now, ten years, they've been dragged through this. You're possibly gonna be closed, you're possibly gonna be closed, you might be closed, you might be closed, and this whole time, the enrollment has dropped. You're telling me that the school board couldn't foresee this, and now we're in a situation where we're like, guess what? We're gonna have to close your school, and it's going to be awful. But it's something that's probably gonna have to be done. I'm not gonna like it, but that's just a reality.
So closing schools should be an absolute positive last resort. And one of the reasons why is because, like I said before, the schools are the heart and soul of every community. Every kid should have a neighborhood school to go to. However, population and enrollment is cyclical. Once you close a school, it's gone. Don't let anybody tell you different. It's gone. You close it and you reuse it. That's what ends up happening. So with that being the case, then what you need to do is have a thoughtful, well-planned community process that we had ten years ago with Mr. Hector over there, when we did school consolidation plan to bring before the board and before the community. Community needs to have an enormous amount of input in this. You then have boundaries to change, and it causes a lot of upheaval and disruption. So it is an absolute last resort.
Thank you. Let's, you can come out.
All right. So when this discussion of school closures came up, you know, the folks would say, you know, sacrifice a good amount of fuel for the benefit of the rest. And that just been said with me, because I was one of those few growing up. Closing schools is not the right solution without deliberate thought process, right? We were thinking about closing schools when we were looking at a sixteen million dollar budget deficit, and the sky was falling and there was a big problem, right, man? We don't have that situation. If we had closed that school in October, they could not have been the right move for our community. It would not have been the right move for that, those students, right? So I would not close schools unless we figure out a deliberate process, engage the community to the extent that there is more than an issue we have upon measures. We have thirty-five million dollars and we did not spend it wisely. We should figure out how we go refurbish that school and what is that.
Thank you. Chris?
Closing schools is like grabbing the third rail. I mean, you're gonna die if you touch that one. Reason is because in the Evergreen School District, we built, not built, we didn't build, but we created a school to be strong, neighborhood schools. Parents and families love their school, my goodness. And it's a calamity, they hear that you might close their school. So the process has to be done right, because it could come to the eventuality that for the health of the entire school district, that we need to, you know, collapse a little bit. Businesses do that, and there's no reason that school districts should not consider that. But it's a double-edged sword. You know, we just, we build communities to love their schools, and if we ask to close them, we just really need to communicate with everybody and to find out a way to answer all their questions, because it's scary. It's a scary thing.
Chris, Patty, you lead us off on this next one. What ideas do you have on improving and ensuring safety in and around our schools?
Well, first of all, each school has a safety plan. And it's something that we have to constantly, and actually every year, the school site council, you go over. We also need to work closely with our city councilwoman and the police department. What can we do to have as many safety measures as possible? As far as the district level, we also need to make sure we have enough counselors, because a lot of these issues for kids has to do with, you know, having mental awareness issues, right? A lot of kids have a lot of stress or anxiety. We need to be aware of that, and our staff needs to be trained so that they can pick up on signs if there's an issue going on in school. So it's about working and collaborating with our schools, our district, our city councilwoman, and our police department.
So school safety runs the whole gamut. I mean, in the horrible possible situation of an active shooter, that's one extreme. And the other extremes are things like bullying. It's still an issue of safety, okay? There are things that we could do on a daily basis, and we've done them in our school districts, and we could do better with those. In the, in the school that I'm at, we have constant bullying seminars. We have the kids do projects on bullying, okay? And that is actually one of the most devastating and debilitating issues in the schools, okay? Because the kids that are bullied have problems learning, they have problems fitting in. The active shooter, well, that's the other extreme, and I for one have been through a three-day active shooter training, and I believe that our administrators should be at every school site so that they know what to do and know what to expect. And there should be active drills for that as well, that include the kids. So those are the two extremes, and there's a whole lot in between.
So I was on the school site also for Calum Clark, worked on the security policy there. Also was on the school consultation, number ten. School safety is not just shooters. We had a teacher with a gun. That's an extreme case, but it's also when kids walk across major thoroughfares. We have to make sure that we provide crossing guards. We have to make sure that we invest in unemployment. We have to add counselors to reduce stress for students and teachers. Make sure that students who are, who have mental health issues get referred to the counselors, get counseling, reduce stress in our community, reduce stress in unemployment, right? And finally, we also adopt the latest board policy to be consistent with what CSVA calls for. So that if there is a situation, if we need to have safety police officers there, we have policy in place to take care of it.
Chris? What I do is you have a program to ensure and say, I don't know, in our schools.
Once again, it's a, not a school problem, it's a community problem. Over the years, the Evergreen School District has, I say unfortunately, plenty of fences and gates, and so that's not as welcoming to the parents, but it's a necessary, we give up that contact with our parents just being on our our school campus, they can sign in, and sometimes that's a barrier, but it's good. Also, we do a lot of, I've seen a lot of the schools and school districts do the very hard thing of training teachers, training students to recognize problems and to speak up when there is a problem. How do you, you know, confront a bully? How do you say something about a friend who might be ready to do something that is not very safe? So it is a community problem, it's a training problem, and we need to all work on that together.
So today, even in my own high school, I walked into the student center and I met the person that works with my students. And I think that's important to have that type of resource on a campus. And we talked about a student that I currently have that needed her support. I think that's really important. Another thing that recently happened was we did an active shooter drill. It was my first one I'd ever done in my twenty-five years. Yes, I have been on the classroom for the past eleven years. But for this, it was interesting because we actually had to pretend, and we had to go through the drill and take it seriously, because we don't know what it is. So I think that's something that I want to make sure this district does. Earthquake drills, I've got an earthquake drill next week, because you never know. You never know. There was a fire when I was at Evergreen Valley High School. It was small. But when the alarm went off, I escorted my students, and then I said, oh, there's this fire. It was in the trashcan, so we went the other direction. So it's always good to practice, and then when the real thing happens, to be ready. And then the last thing, when we built Evergreen Valley High School, we needed to get more support, so we made sure that we had crosswalks for students and things like that, so we make sure that that's available at all the school sites.
Thank you. Jim, what benchmarks do you believe are relevant for determining fair compensation for teachers?
Benchmarks should be consistent with surrounding communities, surrounding districts. I think it's also important to try as best as you can to provide a living wage, and I say that in a broader sense, so that you can have local employees, if it's possible, okay? I also think, and this is probably another way, or another area where I might differ, is it would be great if there was a way to introduce some sort of merit into the evaluation. In this way, that the great teachers could be compensated, and the teachers that aren't so great, and I hate to say it, but in all industries, this is true. You've got your stars, and you've got your people who show up and do a good job, and that's about it. So there should be a way to, to put a merit system in place. It should be competitive. It should be not just salary and benefits. There are other things that show appreciation for how a person is doing in their job.
I'm a family member of San Jose State. I'm a member of CTA. I'm thankful that my union there advocates for my benefits. So I don't begrudge anyone their salary. Like, I work three jobs to maintain my family and send my students to college. So what should be the benchmark? The benchmark should be what is commonly accepted and what is affordable in this district, right? Evergreen School District spends fifty-two point seven five percent of our unrestricted budget on salaries compared to Cooper Dino fifty-one percent. So we compensate well, but it is public funds, and today's money for today's children, right? This is not for us to hold the money. And like I said earlier, our reserves are not growing. It's only three point five percent if EE passes. Therefore, the metric should be, are we compensating our teacher's family?
Chris, what benchmarks do you believe are relevant for determining fair compensation for our teachers?
That's a landmark, landline question. I'm gonna step on that one. Compensation for teachers, we need to, again, attract and retain the best teachers, and that is through pay, but it's also through the support that we give to the classrooms. It's also making sure that the, they get that proper respect. The current negotiated agreement isn't a great amount of money. It's four percent over three years, because the teachers understand there's not a lot of money there, but they do wanna be respected, and they do have rising costs that we all have as just living in this big area. So the benchmarks, that's a slippery slope, because who gets to, who gets to put those in place? But the principals are the ones that do the evaluations, and they're the first, the first gatekeeper of excellent teachers.
So the average money per student has gone up. And yes, we are in declining enrollment, but when you have less students, you actually have less bills, so you hire less people. So overall, the percentage that you're spending is actually, has gone down. I spent some time with a CTA staff member, and he's explained to me that the actual percentage that they're spending on teacher salaries is actually going down in overall the budget. Obviously, employees are gonna be the largest percentage of any school district. That's common. But I really wanna make sure that everybody is compensated fairly. We are a growing district at times. We've gone up, we've gone down, but we are getting more money. This year, we got more money than last year. That's a fact. And so how are we spending the money? We wanna make sure that we have employees to educate our students, and we wanna make sure that we have happy employees to educate our students. So we will make good decisions, I think all of us will, whether we're on the board or not, and I think that's important, that we give them a good compensation so that they will be here to educate kids.
Okay, well, in order to attract and retain teachers, we need to consider the cost of, the cost of living, we need to offer them benefits, and we also need to give them competitive salaries. The reality is that benefits nowadays, sadly, is something that people like to go after and cut, and those are things that actually matter sometimes more than the pay raises, because the pay raises really aren't that much. So when you come after their benefits, it hurts more. So, and there are school districts that do not provide benefits to their teachers or employees. And I think that's a very sad thing in today's environment. It shouldn't be that people who work in corporate corporations are the only people who get to have benefits. We need to provide that too.
All right, we're gonna close here. There's three more here. So let's press through. Jim, if you had to choose between the rates for teachers, meaning potential larger class sizes.
Wait, hold on, we're a little confused.
I think Bellagio's first, because I started the last question.
You're right. It says right here, Bellagio. If you had to choose between the... If you had to choose between a raise for teachers, meaning potential larger class sizes, and keeping the current number of teachers along with current class sizes, which would you choose and why?
Okay. So, as I said, we don't prioritize the budget, we budget out the areas. So, I think without context, that is a false choice, right? We want to have small class sizes from K through three. So the answer is not to compare salaries versus class size. It is what we are trying to do, which is measure EE, pass measure EE, everyone, pass measure EE. That's the point. The way you address that is to get the community support, get their buy-in, and make sure that we have small class sizes for K through three, when it really matters, which is what, fifty percent of measure EE budget goes towards that. And then you have general funds, and the general, uh, process to negotiate teachers' salaries and compensate their family.
Are you still thinking? Uh, no, no. If you had to choose between a raise for teachers, meaning potential larger class sizes, and keeping the current number of teachers along with current class sizes, which would you choose and why?
All right, we could play King Solomon with the baby. Tough question again. Um, teachers have shown throughout the history of the school district to do the right thing. They've taken zero percent when things were really tough. And again, like, this recent one, it was four percent over three years. That's not a lot, it's not a lot, because they recognize that money needs to be spent in the classrooms and for the programs, and they are so excited about bringing to the students and the families. So, uh, raise versus class sizes? I would, I would have to go down that route with a gun to my head, and eventually I would come to this decision, but you would all know why I made that decision. I wouldn't do it, uh, without everybody here in my point of view. And if it's a wrong one, then, uh, you, you can do whatever you want to. But it's a, it's a tough thing, but again, it's always about supporting teachers. And they're kinda like the, the same here. Small class sizes is a great thing, but we have to retain our teachers.
I find this question silly, because you're never gonna just look at two items when you're, uh, looking at a budget. Budgets worth, has millions of dollars involved. So I'm not gonna weigh those two items against each other. I'm gonna look at the entire budget and look in, see where the cuts need to be, if we're at that position, and what we need to do, what we have to build a great budget. So I, I'm not gonna answer that question, because that's silly. You, I'm never gonna say, okay, these are the last two things, it's one or the other. I'm gonna look at the entire thing, and I'm gonna help build a budget that is good for students, right? Students first, staff, we wanna make sure we have good staff. That's what I'm gonna work on. So I'm not gonna pin one item against the other. That's not what I, I do now, that's not what I would do as a board member.
Yes, that question is actually complicated. You can't do one over the other. And I do wanna point something out. You know, when you talk about, well, larger class sizes, so teachers get paid more. Have you been in a classroom? Because I am a substitute teacher, and I'm a parent, and I had no idea when they tell you, oh, you know, we want smaller class sizes. Well, guess what? It doesn't click in my parent head, because I'm not in that classroom. But the moment I became a substitute teacher, and I had to walk around these classrooms, and I'm like, hmm, I have to squeeze myself in between all of these desks. Whose desk am I choosing to rest my bum on? Because that's how close these desks are. And also, if there's a combo class, and that caught, the kids have to come into your classroom, sometimes they sit on the floor, but parents don't realize that. So when you're telling me that teachers would take a small percentage and have larger class sizes, I just don't see that.
Well, um, studies prove many times that smaller class sizes in TK through three is very, very important for, for cognitive learning and for, um, assimilation into the, the, the whole process. My own personal feeling, uh, being in the classroom, I see it at the eighth grade level, so I can imagine what it's like on the lower level. Um, that is not really that far fetched a question, because it actually had come before the board about three years ago, where as a board member, it was probably the hardest thing I had to think about, and that was, we were voting on it, on a TA that offered four percent to the teachers, and at the same meeting, we voted to eliminate twenty-five teacher positions. And my statement at that point was, why couldn't we keep some of those teachers and lower the class sizes? Get rid of some of the combo classes? This is the complaints that teachers have had, that they brought before us. And I said, why can't we do that? And they said, this is not the way we do things. So I think that there could be a trade-off, and small class sizes are more important.
All right, Chris? Well, I have a last one. The district and the teachers' union have a tentative agreement pending passage of measure EE. Would you vote to ratify the agreement, and what is your rationale?
If they re, they reached that agreement, what, at one AM morning? And they spent, uh, two years trying to get there. So a lot of, uh, a lot of details, a lot of heavy thinking went into that. Plus, they had an arbiter there who was also expert on, uh, and making sure that all the parts of the budget were daylighted. So yes, I would ratify that, uh, that, that, uh, agreement. Uh, but I would also work like crazy to pass measure EE. We have to pass measure EE. That's local money that all of us get to say, it goes to this. The state of California money comes in, we, it's oftentimes has strings attached. But measure EE, class size, the school safety, art, music, and, and technology, as is needed in our own schools. So, uh, yes, I would support the teachers, and, uh, and, uh, if measure EE passes, God help us. Or it does not pass, so I won't.
Yeah, can I? Jim just informed me that, that they answered, that, that the board members answered the question. They're violating the Brown Act.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I would ask the three of you, what do you wanna hear about that? I'm fine.
We'll answer.
No, we can answer, if that's fine.
I, I, yeah, I'm not sure how. Can we just skip it and go on to the next one?
No, I actually would like to answer it.
I think we should be able to answer it.
Sorry, guys.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So, I'm very familiar with the bargaining process. So, the district bargains with the teachers, and then they come to an agreement, and then that agreement is voted on by the teachers. And then if the teachers agree to it, then it's voted onto the board. That is a good process. It's a legal process, it's labor laws, so yes, I would vote for that, because it got to that point. If it, if it didn't get to, to me, then it's not right. So if the district and the teachers sign off on something, and then the teachers vote for it, yes, I would always ratify a contract that comes to the school board.
Yes, I would ratify it. After all, that, they were, you know, there was a moderator who was neutral. You had both parties, the district, you have the teachers, the teachers voted yes. We want labor stability. We want to bring back, you know, our, their teachers wanna get back to work. They don't like this work to rule, they hated it. You know, I know, because I was there. My kids hated it, but they understood. So let's, why wouldn't we respect the whole process?
Thank you, I apologize to the...
Uh, I, I do have a comment, though.
Okay.
So, uh, even before Jim walked out, I, in my mind, said, I will not answer how I want. But I am listening to the community, right? And, and definitely there's a need for closure. That's one. Number two, we are also waiting for the county to come back and give us an assessment of the TA on the impact. So we will wait for that. There is more data to be gathered here. So, this is gonna be a deliberative process. This is not something that, and I would certainly not, like one of the, uh, the candidates said, want any contract that comes to me and ratify it. It has to stand on X, Y, and X. It has to align with my principles. It has to do the right thing by our students. But we are waiting for data, and when the data comes, we will decide.
So I'll answer a slightly different question, if that's okay, okay? And basically, what it comes down to is, I believe that it is totally legal and moral if a person truly feels in their heart that a TA is wrong, and that it's not gonna serve the kids, that they could vote against it. The second thing I'll say is, in my opinion, and it's just my opinion, I think that the way that we bargain in this district is not right. And that's because the people who bargain in this district, the way that we've been handling the raises is, they get the raise that they bargain. And to me, that's a conflict of interest. So there needs to be another way. And I think, um, Chris brought up, for instance, the superintendent, right? There should be a different way to negotiate the, the management than the way we handle it now. So I'll just say that.
All right, um, last question that we have prepared for you.
It's really late, huh? Some of us have to teach tomorrow.
Yeah. Four years from now, three of you will be continuing your term as trustees. How will the Evergreen School District be different than it is now? You're up.
I like that these little future questions. So, uh, I think that, uh, the staff will be happy. I think that it'll be more like it was when I first entered the district. I think that there'll be better communication between the classified and, and the certificate with administration. I'd like to say that there'll be better community involvement. Everybody will seem like they're enjoying going to work. We won't be seeing, uh, people frustrated anymore. And I think that I'll have a lot of new friends. I'll meet a lot of new people in the community, I'll get to know the staff as well, and I will have enjoyed the four years of being on the board.
You will have a district culture, you will have labor peace, and you will have an inspired and passionate community. That's what you're gonna have. And you can go to the schools that I've been a part of, especially, I like to brag about Quimby. I'm sorry, but I do, because we worked so hard last year. I'm very proud. And you know, I loved Mr. Bond, and we clicked, but I like to use him as an example, because everyone told me all these negative things about him, and we still work so well together. I was actually excited to see him go, okay, I was, because he was awesome. But if you see what we did at Quimby and how far we've come, go talk to the staff there. The first time I met them last year, I showed up, and when I introduced myself, the look on their faces were like, how are you different? One year later, I, when I talked to them, totally different attitude, because we proved ourselves, and that's what I'm gonna do. Thank you.
Unfortunately, but I've been in this position twice. And I have to say that the one reality is, is there are five people on the board, and you can make all the decisions. But my contribution to the district will continue to be advocacy, advocacy to the students, advocacy for a fair and balanced budget that includes proper compensation, fair compensation to all our employees, uh, communication that involves, uh, the community in a more meaningful and deliberate way, and, uh, better outreach. And I have a feeling that there're gonna be other external factors that are going to impact the district, both financially and in a management scenario. So, using my expertise, having the ability to hit the ground running and to keep going, and to use my, mm, uh, expertise to bring commu, uh, committees like I've done before, with joint use and, um, land use, to come up with ways to come up, uh, to bring better and more, uh, stable revenue to the district. Blah, blah, blah.
So Evergreen got an exemplary school district award, right? Three of our schools got district, which is good awards. So not everything is broken, right? That's not throughout the video and that, okay? There are good things that we need to keep. We have the trust, we take care of our teachers, we tell them, we need to keep that, right? So there are things that we do have that has a reason to keep and sustain. On the other hand, even through permanent ties, we need to get to a better labor situation. Uh, but we managed to get there by giving teachers what they wanted in terms of negotiation, but without closing schools, so I was happy, right? So what do I want to see? I want to see equity in education, number one. I wanna fix those schools that have more. We have money, we have more money, let's go fix them. And we need better community engagement. The whole L-CAP process is about that. That's picking on our community, is making a lot of us at this end.
Chris?
Oh, my goodness, four years from now, well, like Jimmy said, I hope there are no further calamities, but, uh, the, the external factors that will pressure schools and school districts and even the community members. Uh, but if there are, then I hope that we can, during the next four years, we'll build a, a structure and a process of collaboration that allows us to be strong to face those problems in the future, to be able to discuss them, uh, with, uh, with empathy and, and respect, and come to compromise perhaps, or at least to an understanding of what is the proper thing to do in a tough situation. Uh, one of the other things I know, like, over the next four years, is our Evergreen schools will continue to be recognized for excellence, uh, just like, uh, like you said, the last, uh, three, uh, last year, three schools were, were recognized, and, uh, last year, the Evergreen School District was recognized as an exemplary district.
Thank you. And thank you all for doing what you could within a one-minute timeframe to just answer the question. It's more than experience how, how difficult that can be. So the group cards right before this for the order for the final presentations, and I wrote them down, it was Patty, Jim, Marissa, Bellagio, and Chris. So Patty, you're up first.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you for taking the time to attend the forum this evening. I hope that I have given you the information that you need to make an informed choice. I think it is very apparent that I am passionate, motivated, and eager to make a difference for our students. I am invested in our schools. I have skin in the game. I have spent the last eight years making a difference at my children's schools. This is an extension of all the work that I have done. I am proud of the relationships I have built, the events I have organized, and the goals I have achieved. I look forward to creating a district culture that embodies our mission and vision statement and our board, and our, I'm sorry, and our brand promise. We will become a school district that not only exemplifies academics, but also promotes community involvement from our neighborhoods, older community members, business partnerships in a district that will rise to become an example for others' school districts to follow. I know what I bring to the table. I do not shy away from the fact that I am fearless in my dreams for our district. We need someone who is driven, passionate, and motivated to do what is best for our students. I am not here to waste time. I am here to put my ideals to work and leave the toxic environment that currently exists behind. I make no secret of the fact that I am confident in my abilities. I am in it to win it. And I hope that you will join me on November sixth in making the changes necessary. Thank you for being here today.
All right, good luck. Uh, Jim?
Well, first, let me thank you for having the honor of serving on the Board of Trustees for the last eight years. And I'd like to look back on those eight years and see, when I entered the school board, we had no busing, libraries were closed, okay? Classrooms weren't funded, okay? And what I strove to do was to rebuild a lot of what was, how can I say? Left behind from a declining economy. I vowed to bring back the libraries, I vowed to bring back some of the bus routes, I vowed to bring back GATE, but that didn't happen, unfortunately. Instead, we've got LSI, and we've got Bulldog Tech. So, over the last eight years, I believe my expertise has been lent in scrutinizing the finances, looking at our policies, which really govern how we do things, and how people get involved, okay? And how we interact as a board and with the governance team. So we've improved those, believe it or not. Um, my expertise in business and looking at it from a different perspective, bringing best practices to the board, I think was very important, and to understand how to go to outside sources and to work with them, okay? Uh, connecting with, for instance, the bus trip to Sacramento, and making sure our students were involved in that, so even small things. I've been involved in the school since my daughter started, uh, at Millbrook, and since my, uh, so my son graduated Quimby over a couple of years ago. Uh, I did Odyssey of the Mind, I did ABC cornerstone reading, I did junior achievement, and I got to know what parents were interested in and what was needed for the students. And that's what I brought to the board, and always had that, uh, foundation of kids first, do no harm. Marissa.
So my grandparents came over from Mexico. My parents were born. My dad in Texas, my mom in Michigan, following the fields. They somehow met in California, settled here, had their kids. They both graduated from high school. They wanted me to graduate from Harvard. So that was exciting for me to be a graduate of college, to come back to start my career at Leva. I felt like I was a role model for Latinos all over and I want to continue to do that as a board member. I want to make sure that we're getting that kid that doesn't have the parents that went to college. I want to make sure that we're motivating them, that we're finding out what they need, we're supporting them. Some of them might be LGBT kids and they might need additional support too. So I want to make sure that we're doing those type of programs. I want to be a role model for this community and I want to make sure that we give all of these students the best opportunity. That means they need to have great teachers. That means they need to have great classified staff. All those things are part of the whole equation of what's going to make a good school district. I live it every day. I enjoy what I do. I enjoy seeing the kids and I ask them, where'd you go to school? They're proud and they tell me they went to Shaboya or they went to Quimby or they went to Leva. And I want to make sure that they continue to do that. So that's why I want you to vote for me. Thank you.
So thank you. You know, all candidates here are definitely passionate about education, about supporting our students, about supporting our schools, right? But passion is just not sufficient. You need passion, but you need the knowledge of how the system works. You need the, you need the experience to provide good governance. I run a half a billion dollar business. I have budgets. We prioritize and put money where our priorities are and not lurch from crisis to crisis. I put myself through a master, a PhD and an MBA and a faculty member. I am a standing testament to the opportunities that education provides. And so I understand the challenges and the opportunities that a good education can give. And I have been born in this district for eighteen years, doing all the programs, science from UPY, art from UPY, school side also, serving at a two-steps as your trustee. And it takes three votes to do anything in the board and I've always been in the majority or mostly in the middle. I think that's because I bring consensus. I bring consensus and I talk to people. I talk to community, faculty, staff members, trustees. And I do that when the policy is created, it is students, staff, community, district. I am not a lawyer to anyone. I'm an independent candidate. I don't ask for donations. I don't take any money. My North Star is what I said, what my priorities are. So this is a grassroots campaign. I need your support. I'm one of the best candidates to represent you on the Evergreen School District Board of Trustees. Vote for Balaji. Look for more information at balajiforEEST.com. Thank you.
Chris, you get to go last.
All I have to say is I love Evergreen. Once upon a time, when I was a young, you're right out of college, Evergreen took a chance on me. And then later on, they took a chance on me to become administrator, first as an assistant principal. Laila and Quimby, and then later on, he's a school principal at several of our elementary schools. So I owe a lot to Evergreen and I'd like to give back. Some of my friends said, what in the world are you doing running for the school board? You're retired. And I say, yes, I am. So I'm very wealthy and wealthy in time. I'm also very wealthy in skills and so I can, I can give that, I can be generous with that, with my time, with my skills and hopefully be one of the, one of the voices that can help guide the Evergreen School District and the entire community to, you know, the excellence that we've come to expect. So let's, let's do that. I am a, I am a veteran of the Evergreen schools and so I'm, I'm not saying that this is part of the evolutionary process when I go from teacher to administrator to school board member, but that certainly gives me some measure of, of trust in the fact that I can actually do the job. I've been through budget cuts every decade. You can look through the, through the years. Budget or budget problems happened in every decade and we made tough decisions over the years. I may not have been part of the decisions, but I was part of determining out those decisions. You know, changing boundaries, very tough thing to do with communities where they love their school and they're asked to go to another school. Or they're building a new school and everybody wants to go there because new is better. It's not always the truth. But the, the biggest thing is that it's putting together people because it's a symphony of ideas and it's just not one person's idea and that's what I, I'm actually good at, getting everybody together.